Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours. One nation, under God, in the best of, for the unity and justice for all.
Okay, there are a couple. Oh, yes, roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Present.
Trustee Lamp, uh, Lappin.
I'm here.
Clerk Plavich here, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Croll.
Uh, absent.
Excuse.
Excuse.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Uh, present. Uh, there are under new business items eight, there is one addition uh to a GL for budget adjustment. Uh, under the Water Department, actually, it's in Public Safety, I do apologize. Um, and then that will be added. And then also new business item eleven, which is a resolution for Michigan Department of Transportation. It's a permit for working within the right of way. Uh, with those corrections to the agenda, are there any other correction substitutions or redactions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or I oppose the same. Okay, moving on, uh, and I do want to give, I did give a heads up early to uh some of the uh members of uh the public here. Uh, unfortunately, we do, because of time constraints, we will be going into a closed session. Um, at the beginning after the consent agenda, um, it is unfortunate, but it's the only time that we had available to make that conversation happen. Uh, we will bring you back in upon the conclusion of that uh closed session to continue on with the agenda. Uh, and the first public comment is also stated is for agenda items only, uh, so if you do have comments, as I said to Mr. Goran. Uh, on an item that's not on the agenda, uh, that would be uh where the comments take place on the second public comment. Uh, with that being said, uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment for agenda items. If you have any public comment, please stand at the podium, state your name for the record. Uh, if you have any public comment online, uh, please use the bottom taskbar under the ellipsis to, so that we can identify you and your public comment.
Ready? Right.
My name is Beverly Banks, who would like to bring it to, uh, bring to the public's attention some concerns of a letter that names me as a candidate on tonight's agenda. This letter is only information from the lens of the people on the Board of Trustees. I was not included in any discussion or questions regarding this topic. That opinion is also, in my opinion, incomplete, which there are unnamed options that can be explored and not mentioned in this one option. This release, this release uses public resources and tax money to target Ms. Kajabuski and I as candidates. And it fails to mention Sarah Flick, Treasurer candidate, that is on the November ballot also, who is the wife of the ten-ten owner, who has the contract with the township to provide exclusive IT performance, who is in the same exact situation as we are. This letter also fails to include current processes already in action of Nathan Skibby being over every committee, and his mother draws a paycheck for being on a commission slash committee without them expressing potential conflict. In addition, the Township Trustees slash Clerk was aware of my running when I filed my intent in July, yet waited until this week to use township resources to publicly put this on the agenda just over one week before the general election. That gives the impression the township is negatively campaigning against me and using public resources and funding to do it. That is not even a factual thing until I'm elected. This is potentially a concern of violations of the Campaign Financing Act and also gives unfair advantage to all of the incumbent candidates.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any public comment online? Moving forward, uh, is there anything to be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Russ, do you have something that you would like to have pulled?
I, I just, in question of minutes, uh, I, I think I was in attendance, but it, one place it indicates that I was not in attendance. Uh, when we voted on the consent agenda, maybe I was late, but I don't think so. At the minutes of September twenty-three.
Alright, I will correct that. Do we want to pull it?
Yep. Pull it to have. Okay, so we will pull the minutes of September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, correct the minutes, uh, or the attendance record showing that trustee Russ Reiner is in attendance. Uh, we'll start with a, a motion to adopt the and approve the consent agenda as presented minus the minutes. Is there a motion on the?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, uh, to approve the consent agenda minus uh item B. Uh, is there support to the motion?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All, uh, roll call, please.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, now moving back to item B of the minutes of September twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-four, regularly scheduled Board of Trustees, uh.
I, I will make a motion to correct the consent agenda to show that trustee Russ Reiner was in attendance.
Okay.
And he did vote.
We have a motion, uh, to correct the minutes as presented, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving on, uh, to the closed session, is there a motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion that the Township Board entered a closed session to consult with the Township Attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation, pending before Alpena County Circuit Court pursuant to MCL one-five dot two-six A one E.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We're now, now officially in closed session.
Alright.
We're now officially back in open session, I do again apologize for the delay and for the conversation. Um, moving forward on the agenda, as um trustee Polly will be making his way back into uh the boardroom is, thank you very much, Mr. Polly, is under all business ordinance one.
Uh, I need to make a motion.
Sorry.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept Township Council's settlement recommendation and authority to transmit the same to the city attorney.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to old business, ordinance one fifty-five, which is the Fire Department Recovery Ordinance, Mr. Gold.
That's exactly right, Fire Department Cost Recovery Ordinance, which was introduced during the last Township Board meeting. And uh notice of introduction was published and indicated that the Board tonight would consider doing a motion to finally adopt ordinance one fifty-five. And then we'll publish a notice and then it will take effect from the date of publication, so I'm asking for a motion to adopt ordinance number one fifty-five.
Is there such motion on the table?
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to adopt uh ordinance one fifty-five.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Gold. Um, new business item number one, uh, is our audit report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, with us, we have uh Chelsea and Savannah, uh, podium tours.
So, good evening, it's a pleasure to be here to present fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-fourth audit to you all, I'm Chelsea McConnell, this is Savannah Atkins, and we're here with Stray Lamp and Cransline. So, just a little synopsis about what an audit is, so at the conclusion of an audit, the independent external auditor will find on whether they believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And although an audit is the highest level of attestation engagement you can have, it is not absolute assurance, so I always like to point that out. And your financial statements are, and note disclosures are required to comply with generally accepted accounting principles, and our audit is conducted under generally accepted auditing standards. So a little bit about your report design, so first you'll find the Independent Auditor's Report. And followed by that is Management's Discussion and Analysis, Management's Discussion and Analysis is required supplementary information, so it's not part of the basic financial statements or required under generally accepted accounting principles, however, it is required under generally accepted governmental standards. Then you have your basic financial statements, which is going to contain your government-wide financial statements and your fund financial statements. So the difference between the two are the government-wide financial statements are on the full accrual basis, very similar to a private sector company, where the fund financial statements are under the modified accrual basis of accounting, which really focuses on how money flows in and out of the funds and what's left over at year end. And then you have your notes to the financial statements, following is the rest of your required supplementary information, which for your report is your major fund budgetary comparison schedules. So the first thing I'm going to go over is a letter titled Communication With Those Charged With Governance, which is you, the Board. And just a couple key items within this communication, this is a required communication between the auditor and those charged with governance. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. In addition, we did implement GASB statement number ninety-six subscription-based information technology arrangements as of April one, twenty-twenty-three. This did not affect the financial statements, and at this time, there are no material spittas or subscriptions that you needed to record for your fiscal year, that doesn't mean there won't be in the future, but at this time, there just wasn't. In addition, all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. There are also some estimates within these financial statements, and some of those are considered significant estimates, so there's certain numbers that you know and can reconcile in any given day, such as cash, and then some numbers that in order to comply with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, you have to reasonably estimate. And some of those significant estimates to your statements are capital estimate, capital assets, which have to, you have to estimate the useful lives of those assets. And then also the potential claim regarding the litigation in the water and sewer fund, which is also disclosed in note twelve to the financial statements. I am pleased to say we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. And we also did not have any disagreements with management during the course of our audit. There were audit adjustments that we proposed, and some of those audit adjustments were material to the financial statements. However, those have all been reviewed by management and approved, and they are reflected within these financial statements. And this letter also reports some upcoming GASB standards, and one of those standards I just wanted to point out is GASB statement number one oh one, which is going to deal with compensated absences. And this is a standard that pretty, every government is really going to have to evaluate and analyze this new standard and the implications on your estimate of compensated absences, so that's something that will need to be done. So next is the Independent Auditor's Report, which you can find on pages one to three. So you were issued an unmodified opinion, except for business-type activities and business-type funds. So an unmodified opinion is the best type of opinion you can be issued in an audit, and it means that we do believe those financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Now, on the business-type fund and activities, that opinion is qualified, and it has been for several years now, and that's really just due to us not being able to obtain those capital asset schedules back from prior to twenty-seventeen, when we took over the audit from the prior auditors, we never could obtain that schedule. So we're estimating that number, but we really don't know how that could, the effects that it could have, because you always have assets that are becoming fully depreciated. Um, and so we really don't know those numbers. In addition, we evaluate risks from audit to audit, and those can change each audit. Um, for twenty-twenty-four, there were some higher, every audit has higher risk areas, and what that means is if a area is higher risk, it just means it gets more substantive testing and that we need to obtain more audit evidence in that area, however, even areas that aren't high-risk, they all get some sort of testing. Now, revenue is almost always considered a high-risk area in an audit, there's also, there's actually an audit codification standard that says that there's always a fraud risk that exists when it comes to revenue, and thus it's always going to be high-risk. In addition, there's al- also an auditing standard that says that management override of controls is always going to be high-risk. Um, and a couple of the other areas are the contingent liability recognized in the water and sewer fund, just because it's one material, two, it's a significant estimate, and there's just unknowns there, so it's just a higher-risk area, and then also just material audit adjustments. The next thing I'm going to go over is the other letter that is not found within the report titled Man- Matters for Management's Consideration. So this is a required communication on internal controls. And internal controls over financial reporting are considered for us, we consider those for designing and standing our audit. However, we do not audit that system of internal controls, nor do we express an opinion on that system of internal controls. So there could be an internal control deficiency that, or our limited scope that we reviewed those in our audit that we didn't identify. So there were a couple findings, um, most of them were repeat from prior years. There was one that wasn't a repeat, which had to do with a budgeting statute, which, um, there was just a couple budget overages. Um, in addition, there were the material audit adjustments that we've spoke about, and then the capital asset records. Um, financial statement preparation and segregation of duties, those two findings are very, very common, even the state of Michigan really doesn't care about those two findings. Um, when reports are submitted, the state actually asks, were there any findings other than these two, they're very common, and nine out of ten governmental reports have those. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Savannah, and she's going to go over some actual numbers and within these financial statements.
So, to begin with the review of the basic financial statements, we're going to look at the statement of net position, that's on page eleven. So the assets increased about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which was mainly due to an increase in investments of approximately one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, along with a decrease in cash of about one million two hundred and fifty-three thousand, and a decrease in internal balances of almost four hundred and thirty thousand. Viabilities had a decrease of about five hundred and sixty-six thousand, and the majority of this had to do with the unearned revenues decreasing about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which was a result of utilizing ARPA funds on eligible expenditures this year. Deferred inflows of resources also decreased due to a special assessment levy being fully collected in twenty-twenty-four. And overall, the net position increased about seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, with the unrestricted portion increasing six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So next we have the statement of activities, and that's on page twelve and thirteen. Uh, here we can see that revenue increased about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand from twenty-twenty-three, while expenses increased about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. The increase in revenue was mainly attributable to the increase in operating grants and contributions, which increased due to utilizing almost five hundred and thirty-eight thousand of ARPA funds in twenty-twenty-four, and due to the property taxes, which decreased about a hundred and seventy thousand due to the special purpose millage that was levied for equipment and concluded in twenty-twenty-three. Expenses increased primarily due to utilizing uh almost a five hundred and thirty-eight thousand of the ARPA funds and a transfer out that was made to the water and sewer fund. So overall, the change in net position was over seven hundred and forty-two thousand, which was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand less than twenty-twenty-three. So next, we have summary of the governmental funds here, which consists of the General Fund, the Public Safety Fund, and the ARPA Fund, found on page fourteen and sixteen. So for the governmental funds, the General Fund and the ARPA Fund had an increase in fund balance, while the Public Safety Fund had a slight decrease. The General Fund was expected to have an increase in fund balance of about two hundred and fifty-six thousand, which was the final budget amount, and ended the year three hundred and eighty-four thousand above that projection with the increase of about six hundred and forty thousand. The unassigned portion of fund balance increased about six hundred and eighteen thousand. Now, one important ratio that we like to look at to measure the general fund's health is the number of days of expenditures in unassigned fund balance. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than sixty days. So for the year ended March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, there is about six hundred and sixty-five days of expenditures, not including the transfers to other funds and unassigned fund balance, so that far exceeds the GFOA recommendation. So lastly, for the financials, we have the proprietary or business-type fund statements for the water and sewer fund, and that would be page eighteen to twenty-one. So overall, the water and sewer fund experienced an increase in net position of about four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which was an increase over the prior year of about one point one million. The main reason for the increase was due to non-operating income of about a hundred and forty-five thousand and transfers in of approximately three hundred and thirty-five. And the majority of the non-operating income increase is due to an increase in interest come, income this year of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And those transfers in came from the ARPA fund for allowable uses of the ARPA funding. And finally, we have the long-term debt, which decreased about two hundred thousand, and there are only two remaining principal payments left on the special assessment bond, so that will be paid in full in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. So that will conclude our presentation, we'd like to thank you all for your time, and thank you, Michelle, Laura, Nathan, for your help during the audit. It's been a pleasure providing audit, audit services to you. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions of Savannah? Or of Chelsea? Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a, a, a motion on the table to uh receive and file the audit as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, uh, further discussions?
The only comment I would make is that it's over the past several years that I've been on this board, we have definitely seen an improvement uh in the township's financial statements, and we have certainly seen uh an improvement on, on, on behalf of the people that look at this stuff most, so thank you so much for your, for your guidance as we improve this township.
We have a motion and support on the table, without further discussion, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it was a pleasure working with you guys.
We appreciate you guys too, and all the help. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next item of new business is uh the new fire chief agreement. With us, uh, we do not have trustee Croll, uh, but present, we also have a member of the Personnel Committee, uh, Clerk Plavich and myself. Um, and it is our recommendation, um, to extend the agreement that's in your board packet to uh Timothy Baker, uh, to become uh the next fire chief employed by the Charter Township of Alpena. Uh, he is with us this evening, as well as his significant other, uh, Tammy, um, so you have anything to add from personnel?
No, I, personnel, we interviewed him twice, met with him, I think he's going to be a great addition to the township.
So.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, if you'd like, chief, uh, well, Mr. Baker, at this point, uh, would you like to come to the podium and I, address the board, or if the board has any questions following you, then we'll conduct.
Sure, um, I didn't prepare anything, but, um, thank you for this opportunity. It was a great process, and I look forward to new and exciting things for Alpena Charter Township.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Baker? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to follow the recommendation of the Personnel Committee.
I will make that motion.
I will support it.
A motion and support on the table, any further discussion?
So the motion is to accept this agreement as presented.
As.
Okay.
For the minutes. Uh, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And chief, plus, uh, our intern chief in the back, uh, this process, uh, hasn't, wouldn't have, uh, taken place so smoothly, bringing, uh, Chief Baker on board, uh, without your assistance, sir, so thank you very much for all you've done. And moving forward, um, we have with us, uh, Mr. Carson, Mr. Carson, would you, uh, like to, uh, present?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Supervisor, can everyone hear me alright?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, pleasure to be here with you virtually. Um, my name is Chad Carston, I'm a Senior Associate at Feige Schultz Berzick Roads. Uh, this firm, in addition to being litigation counsel for the, uh, water rate litigation, is also Township Labor Council. I was asked by the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer to answer questions about potential conflicts of interest. Um, I'm aware that Abby Kajabuski is the supervisor-elect of the township, uh, running unopposed in the general election. Her spouse, as I understand it, is a full-time firefighter, a lieutenant, I believe, and is the president of the Firefighters Union. I'm also aware that Beverly Banks is running for trustee on the general election ballot, um, her spouse is also a full-time firefighter. So I have prepared a memo at the request of, of this board, um, addressing some of those questions that have arisen in that, in that process. Uh, that memo appears in your board packet, um, I'll run through some of the key portions of that, I'm not going to, you know, read a, a seven-page memo to you, but I'll, I'll sort of run through the highlights, and then if there are questions from the board, I'm happy to entertain them as well. Uh, I will say, the, the facts that I was provided, uh, are within the memo, so those are the facts under which I'm working. Um, and that's, that's the basis for the conclusions that I've reached, in addition to experience working with a great number of, you know, municipal communities in similar situations. I, I want to say from the outset, um, I'm not assuming any ill intent or that anyone would act in their own personal interest, I'm simply identifying, uh, potential issues and questions that have arisen in this process, um, so with that in mind, I'll, I'll get to it. Uh, the law on spousal conflicts of interest is unfortunately not particularly clear. Um, so Michigan has what is called the Standards of Conduct Act, which basically says that a, a public official cannot engage in business that would personally benefit them, especially in a financial sense. Um, and the courts have, have not held that to be a conflict when someone's spouse is on the other side of an agreement, so generally what happens in these cases is that the courts will say legally there is not a conflict of interest. Uh, but the courts will go on to say, the public official is probably better off accusing themselves, uh, to stay above even the suspicion or the appearance of a conflict of interest, uh, sort of maintaining the public's trust in government, um, not, you know, even if there is no legal conflict, that there be, uh, no indication or suspicion of that being the case. So that's sort of some of the legal basis, the other component of this, uh, specific to a township board is that the board members owe fiduciary duties to the township. So, uh, there are two pieces to the fiduciary duties that the board members owe to the township, the first is the duty of loyalty, and that requires that the township board members put the township's interests above their own. And again, I'm not assuming that that won't be the case, uh, but merely pointing out that there will be some situations in that, in which that could be challenging, in which, uh, decisions are made that may appear to the public, to others on the board, to present a conflict of interest, even if one does not exist legally speaking. Um, and that duty of loyalty also exists, uh, and that's, the, the duty of loyalty also includes safeguarding confidential information uh, that would be learned as a board member in the role as a board member. Um, and that could be information that would be of interest to, to those who might have, um, interests opposed to the township, or or interests, you know, on the other side of the table from the township, so to speak. The other component of the fiduciary duty is the duty of care, which just requires that board members act in good faith and make informed decisions in the service of the township. I don't understand that to be at issue in this case, so I won't, you know, dive into that all that much. Also say the board has adopted its own code of ethics, which I've reviewed in advance of this meeting. Um, and the code of ethics, I think, imposes a somewhat more rigid standard than what the law requires, which is certainly the board's prerogative to do. Um, so some of the highlights from the code of ethics, uh, as relevant here. Uh, the code of ethics requires that board members observe both the spirit and intent of the law on conflicts of interest and other things. So that again is a little bit more than is legally required, that's, that's, uh, an indication that the township board isn't uh, intending to hold itself to a standard above. Uh intending to hold itself to a standard above that uh and to hold itself above even the suspicion of impropriety. The code of ethics requires fair and partial decision-making on the part of the board members. Um consistent with the duty of loyalty requires that folks, uh public officials. Act consistent with the township's best interests rather than their own personal interests. And finally, of course, public officials are to comply with the law on conflicts of interest and conduct of public officials. The code of ethics also requires a disclosure whenever a decision would have. Uh the direct quote from the policy manual is a personal financial impact to the public official. And then, of course, the township also has an employment of relatives policy, which which may be relevant here, which prohibits a supervisory or management relationship. Between two individuals who are related, which includes spouses. Um and it also prohibits two related individuals from being within the same chain of command. So the bottom line in terms of the law is that we should and often do require more than just technical compliance with the law. For our elected officials, we expect that they'll rise above even the appearance of any impropriety, even if perhaps a legal conflict of interest may not exist. So that's the basis for what's about to follow, which is a series of um recommendations. Um again, might not be a strictly legal problem, but uh we're trying to make sure that there is no um appearance of any difficulty or appearance of any conflict of interest. So what does that mean for us in a situation like this? My recommendations, the recommendations of myself and attorney Mills, who's not present tonight, uh are that. Ms. Koczybowski and if elected, Ms. Banks abstain from votes that directly impact the wages, the benefits and the terms of employment of. Personnel in the fire department. So that would be abstention from participation in deliberations and votes on matters of union collective bargaining as it relates to the firefighters' union. Um and that they not be included in confidential deliberations, which would include closed sessions or correspondence with legal counsel. Uh concerning labor matters related to the fire department. To be clear, it's not a a broad recommendation that they not participate on any personnel matters. Certainly, the township has employees who are not. Um within the fire department, so there's, as I'm aware, uh the FOPLC. Uh collective bargaining group, and there are also some non-union staff within the township. Um I'll also point out that township policy and the Charter Township Act give a township supervisor and a charter township. Authority to be the personnel officer as it's explained in your personnel or as it's explained in your policy manual. Uh it's called the Personnel Director in the Act, but it's essentially the same thing. Uh it's my recommendation that that authority be delegated elsewhere. Uh consistent with the earlier recommendation, which was an abstention from firefighter. Personnel decisions, this is sort of a natural outgrowth of that, so I think it's it's more than half of the township staff that are within the fire department. So in order to keep consistent personnel relations. Um it's my recommendation that that all be consolidated in one person who who does not have the potential conflict of interest as identified here. And along with that, um a recommendation that those individuals not be part of the Personnel Committee for the same reasons. The Personnel Committee is going to handle in large part fire department personnel matters, and therefore that's gonna um. Result in a a great number of abstentions and and the efficiency of that is, I think, questionable. Uh and in my experience, in our experience working with the township, that Personnel Committee is also the township's bargaining team for collective bargaining. And again, that I think is is probably the clearest of the potential conflicts of interest, uh that collective bargaining relationship with the firefighters' union. Consistent with those recommendations, uh it's also my recommendation that the supervisor not directly supervise the the fire chief. Uh which, as I understand it, is the historical practice. Um that I think is born out of a couple of facts here. First, that puts the supervisor in the same chain of command as. As her spouse, um which per the policy is is not permitted. And I think as a more practical matter, it it puts any fire chief in uh an extremely difficult position. By which, you know, their their direct supervisor uh is in a personal relationship with someone to whom. They have a a supervisory relationship. And I think um on a day-to-day basis, the chief is going to have to interact with whoever their supervisor is on labor concerns, grievances. Um disciplinary matters if they arise, and again, that's putting, I think, everybody in that situation and in a difficult spot and sort of an unwinnable. Uh position. Consistent with that, it's also my recommendation that Ms. Koczybowski and Ms. Banks um. Be firewalled from any confidential bargaining strategy sessions and information concerning, in particular, the firefighters. Uh union negotiations, and as I said earlier, that would include closed sessions with labor counsel to discuss collective bargaining. Uh that might also include um safeguarding of certain emails that, as I understand it, might now be within the current supervisor's inbox. So it's my recommendation that uh the supervisor's in inbox be cloned and uh given to likely the clerk. Although the township could certainly designate someone else to do that, uh but the clerk is the keeper of records, I think, is a natural place to do that. Uh and that would prevent any uh possible disclosure of confidential labor communications. Um just to, you know, to avoid that problem, to that avoid that potential problem before it even arises. And of course, there are, there will be items within the supervisor's inbox that can and should be forwarded to the new supervisor. The intent is not, uh the intent is not to hamstring the supervisor's ability to do her statutory duties. Simply to safeguard the information that may be present within a conflict. I I'll just say there also are gonna be cases on the margins. I think there's um. I can give kind of, you know, an overview of what I think will be the potential conflicts of interest, the potential spots where abstention may be appropriate. But there are gonna be situations that are not going to be as clean-cut as the examples I was able to produce here. And those are gonna require collaboration between the board, um new board members, incumbent board members to. To sort of find those margins and find a a situation, a s- a system that works for everybody. Um because I don't think they're always going to be quite as obvious as as maybe some of the things I've been able to to discuss here. I I'd add that there's no basis to think that either of the spouses in this situation would need to to change anything they're doing, you know. They're certainly permitted to continue in their current roles with no disruption to that. I don't think that was ever the insinuation, but I do want to make that clear. Um and I'm also aware that Ms. Koczybowski and Ms. Banks serve themselves as paid-on-call members of the fire department. Um and I will say the Incompatible Offices Act specifically allows that to be the case, so they are permitted to continue in those roles if they choose to do so. Um in compliance with the employment of relatives policy uh and within the the chain of command in the fire department. So. If if it is the case that those individuals choose to abstain from votes on the township board. Um there is a process by which that must happen, that's set forth specifically in your policies and within the Charter Township Act. So the process is that that individual disclosed the potential conflict of interest to the board. And then again, the law and policy require that the remainder of the board who's present. Must unanimously uh permit that abstention. So the process would be. To disclose it, to have the remainder of the board unanimously approve an abstention, and then to carry on business consistent with that abstention. Um so that's sort of the, that's the highlights of the memo. Um I can stop. Monologuing for the time being, um there are certainly more detailed analysis within the memo itself. Uh I'm happy to entertain questions from the board members as well.
I have a question, Chad. I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. It would be a conflict of interest for them to be like in a closed session regarding the IAFF. But if we were going into closed session about the FOP, they could remain in that. Am I correct in thinking that?
That is correct. I want to be clear that I don't know that we can identify for certain it is a conflict of interest with the IAFF. But it is certainly, as I've articulated here, kind of that appearance of of a conflict of interest at the very least. Um but yes, I don't see any impediment to them being involved in personnel decisions that do not involve the fire department, that I think. Um I I do think they should be involved in those discussions.
Trustee Reiner.
Um you mentioned under the, I think you mentioned it under the uh Charter Township Act, that the supervisor. Is uh automatically a head of personnel, but a delegation of those responsibilities could be made. Um that being the case, who makes the delegation?
So that's a an excellent question. My understanding is that the delegation would need to come from the supervisor. Or would need the supervisor's consent in order to get the delegation of that authority. So it belongs to the supervisor, the supervisor at least has to to okay that delegation.
That would be the complete delegation of all personnel, head of personnel responsibility, that what you meant?
That that that's my understanding, correct?
There are any other questions?
Would that be a delegation to someone on this board? Or or how tell, explain that more, please?
Yeah, it would be my recommendation that it be a board member that it is um delegated to, because otherwise I think it's a a challenging situation. Unless the township were to hire a manager or superintendent, which of course I have no information suggesting that is the intent. Um but I I do believe it would be appropriate and the best course of action that it be delegated to someone else on the township board.
I guess I want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. Currently, our policy, so you just say that the pol- personnel officer is the supervisor. That's in our policy. That's not their statutory duty, though. So could the board delegate it?
It is a statutory duty within the Charter Township Act. Uh Charter Township Act specifically says. That unless a charter township hires a superintendent, here are a list of um. Duties assigned to the supervisor unless delegated, uh and among them is being the Personnel Director of all personnel within the township. But I, that is a a good point that I I forgot to touch on in my presentation. The, I don't believe that the policies actually need any amendment to effectuate any of this. The policies and the Charter Township Act already assume that a delegation um can be made. And so there is no need to to specifically call out anyone else to be the Personnel Officer. Uh within the policies, because that's already permitted as a delegation.
Are there any other questions?
I have none. How long do we have to wait to do the deleg- to delegate someone else? I mean, does it have to be?
The supervisor is the one who delegates it. So we, as a board, if I'm understanding that correctly.
It's my understanding as well.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh relative to um HR sort of issues, and I recognize that's what we're talking about. Do we utilize any services uh of any HR specialists that uh can help us over some of these? Uh what no doubt will be some difficult areas?
Just their labor attorney, I think.
Uh it, do we, do we utilize any other services?
We have used like um.
Our plan.
Well, it's not through our plan, we use through.
Yeah, through HR Connect or whatever it is.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Carson? A short makes that delegation in the future.
We can't delegate it.
No, I, but we'd have to have a board meeting, because it would have to be approved by the board. And the delegation therein, Mr. Carson, would have to be board-approved, even after the delegation process.
That's my understanding, or at least that would be the most legally defensible way to do it. I think um supervisors either affirmative action or consent to it and the board's decision uh to to agree with that, yes.
If you delegate it, that doesn't mean the new supervisor delegate it.
Correct.
No, I'm not. Does it go back when the new supervisor is elected? Does that power go back to them?
I don't think it necessarily goes back, but I do think that the new supervisor would be empowered to to reclaim those duties. If they revoked the prior supervisor's delegation of that authority.
Would that have to be approved by the board?
Yes.
Uh I don't think so in that case, because that is the supervisor's statutory duties. So my understanding is that that individual would be able to reclaim those duties if they so choose.
One one final question from me. Um although our uh personnel policy i- is is clear and 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 you've made yourself clear. Uh I'm wondering if there shouldn't be some sort of a attachment of this document. Or s- something that recognizes within the policies and procedures manual. That this is a unique situation and that this is how um. This is how this is gonna lay out for the X period of time.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you could make a policy amendment to that effect, um or you could, you know, the board could pass a resolution to that effect. You know, if if there's a delegation of authority, there could be a note that these are um. Sort of extraordinary circumstances, and absent these circumstances, this is not how the the board would have comported itself. I think that's appropriate to sort of lay some breadcrumbs to explain the basis for the decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, and if there are any follow-up questions for me, um you know, certainly, the the board can can reach out. And I'm happy to to provide any supple- supplemental information that might be necessary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carson. You have a wonderful evening, sir.
All right, thank you, folks. You too.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving forward on the agenda is item four, uh elections.
Yeah, we did get a grant that bought our ballot ballot on-demand system that we're using for early voting. It is valued at over five thousand dollars and did not come with a case, so I am asking for approval. To buy the case that's with shipping and handling is nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
I'd make that motion following the recommendation for a total cost of nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents to utilize GL one oh one. Two six two nine seven five zero zero zero, equipment and furniture.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Just an explanation?
Uh what what do you want to?
What's it, what's the purpose of this or what's the requirement for it?
The piece of equipment that we got through the grant is over five thousand dollars, and it is what is used during early voting to print the ballots. At on-demand as people come in.
Oh, as their cash, they go in here or?
No, no, this is what prints them, then we give them to the people, they fill them out, and then they go into the tabulator.
How do we print them now?
We have, we have the ballot on demand, and we got it through a grant, we got, but it did not come with a case.
The case is to protect the.
It's to protect the, it's between five thousand, six thousand dollar piece of equipment.
That is, but this is just.
This is just to protect.
Just to protect the blank ballots until they're voted, after they're voted.
No, no, no. Equipment that prints the ballots.
It would go inside there.
It goes inside here, yes. It's just a case to hold the equipment that will print the ballots used during early voting.
And it locks up and stuff.
It, this doesn't lock, but we keep all of our election equipment locked in that office.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh roll call please.
Did you have something?
I was just gonna ask, this is um the out-of-election funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Out of elections. That was my question.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh moving forward with a new business item number five, uh yeah, before you write. A recommendation uh from the RFP that went out uh for the Ripley Boulevard um bypass uh project. Uh we received two uh bids that came in uh on the twenty-four uh twenty-first of October. Uh one from EMPI LLC and one from MacArthur Construction Incorporated. Uh it is a Huron Engineering and Survey's recommendation, as it is mine, uh to move forward with the uh. Low bidder of EMPI LLC at forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Um my, also my recommendation is to utilize GL one oh one. Two six five nine three zero 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 zero, which is currently funded at just shy of sixty thousand dollars for the project. I'm I'm looking to entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I support it.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Since we have sixty thousand set aside for that and we're spending this, are there other things that we're gonna have to spend money on?
Uh in this fiscal, no, uh capital improvement, uh the seal coating for the bypass would commence for next season. As well as the seal coating projects for the parking lot uh here at the facilities for both the township offices. And the fire department as well as Southside Fire Department. That'd be a third-year rotation on seal coating. But no, not.
So will I need to seal coat this, though, in the first year?
No, that will be brand new. And that is one missing stretch of bypass. That's been missing pretty much my entire life. Having any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin. Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Supervisor Skibby.
Moving forward with new business item six is an appointment for the Northeastern Michigan Materials Management Authority. Recycling Board. As I step down. I believe Laura and and the board would like to have a board action to appoint a replacement at this point in time. Trustee Reiner is my alternate and he's been facilitating. Are you willing to accept the appointment?
Reluctantly, yes, I've been to last two or three meetings. My place is getting a little full.
I'd entertain a motion to make the appointment to trustee Reinhardt. For the Northeastern Michigan Materials Management Authority Board.
I happily make that motion.
Motion and support to appoint trustee Reiner to the recycling board. Any further discussion?
Will we have an alternate? It's currently, I mean, before you and I were on it and Russ was the.
To offer a friendly amendment to the motion if there's somebody that was so willing to make that motion in the first place as an alternate. No, it would probably not be a bad thing to make an appointment to an alternate. Somebody would be willing to facilitate as an alternate position on the recycling board.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking at you or Norm, yeah.
Oh, Norm said he would, alright. Alright.
Steve? You're the alternate?
I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So to the original motion, is there a friendly amendment to also include?
Oh, you may not have an option to say no. I'll, I'll, yes, I'll amend the motion.
Okay, and to the support?
It was Norm.
Good with the friendly amendment to the original motion to include. Okay, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please. Voice vote, yeah, there's no inherent cost. All those in favor of appointing trustee Reiner as to the NEMA board as well as trustee Lappin as alternate. Signified by saying aye. Oppose the same. Thank you very much. Moving forward on the agenda, new business item seven, planning commission appointment. It's my recommendation to make the appointment of Roxanne Brown. We had two candidates. Ms. Brown's credentials were. Slightly ahead of the other candidate with four years as a township treasurer. And four years as a township supervisor. It'd be my recommendation to make the appointment to Roxanne Brown for a four year term to the planning commission.
I have a question. I have not received a resignation letter from anybody to put in their.
For a code, it's been reminded several times to get the the position of. Stepping down from that. Noted. But to that, I'd entertain a. Follow the recommend, we have a motion on the table, following the recommendation, is there support to the motion?
Yes, I support it.
Motion and support, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin. Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Reiner. Supervisor Skibby.
Moving forward into budget adjustments, new item eight. The additional outside of the packet is one addition to budget adjustments. And that is for banking fees in GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, five, five, zero, one, zero. It's my recommendation to add to the budget adjustments of fifteen hundred dollars that would be taken out of. Two oh five, three, three, six, eight, zero, one, zero, zero. Zero, sorry. With that addition to the budget adjustments, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as provided. Have a motion on the table. Trustee Lappin with the motion. Support by Treasurer Ellery Summers. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
One oh one, five, six, five, nine, three, one, zero, zero, zero. Seventy eight thousand dollar addition to that line. That's for building, repair, maintenance. What do we anticipate?
Okay, no, so that is the point of clarification to that GL, that is a. I approached Alpena County. Commissioners to their opioid fund and was. Awarded by my RFP eighty two thousand and change. For building improvements to the Alano Club at thirty one hundred Piper Road. So that is actually the conveyance of that revenue stream to that GL. For the conclusion of those building.
Things that we've discussed.
Any other questions to the budget adjustments as presented? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin. Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly. Supervisor Skibby.
New business item nine, Fire Department Chief. Interim Chief. Chief plus, what do you?
This, I just want to update you on a couple of things that have happened since I submitted my report for the board packet. We had a open house at the South Side Fire Station, went very well. Had approximately when we started realized we should probably count about eighty attendees. So it was between eighty and a hundred, somewhere in there, attendees went very well. We participated last Friday in the trunk retreat event. It was very well attended. The kids I heard had a really good time and I've heard some good, really good feedback on that, so I just want to let you know that. That that went really well. Also. Chief Baker has come up today. He spent the entire day with me. It's been a pleasure working with him. I think we picked a good candidate and I appreciate you guys. Supporting that. He's gonna be here tomorrow as well and then I'm gonna have an opportunity to work with him for a few more days in November before he. He takes over on the first of December, so I appreciate it. I appreciate your support and. We'll we'll get him ready to go.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much, sir. You might as well stay for a new business item ten, county radio match.
Yeah, I I would like to real quick brief you on this. The reason we asked for this is we had submitted for a countywide grant for radios to replace all of our portable radios. That grant came and went. We were not awarded that grant. So but we still need radios, so the county has graciously offered a fifty percent match. Originally, it wasn't quite a fifty percent match, but I was notified yesterday. That some of the other departments did not take their funding, so it will be a true fifty percent match. About thirty six, thirty four hundred dollars apiece. For those three portable radios, so a big savings for us and recommending that we go ahead with that purchase.
It seems to come around, I think it's annually, but it seems like it's more often than that. How, how many more radios do we need?
Well, our. Yeah, that and our fleet of radios are actually probably, and I don't have the exact number. Probably fifty percent of our radios are beyond service life, which means that Motorola will no longer service them. So if we have a problem, they have to go to a third party vendor and if they have parts, they can fix them. And so their end of life radios, they need to be replaced and even if we replace them a few at a time, it's better than not having. You know, just not having radios.
Do we get new radios in these purchases or are they?
They're brand new. No, no, and I I think half of our fleet of radios are used, I believe, from downstate somewhere, the Saginaw area.
So these will be three new radios.
Three brand new radios will be issued out. They they say five to ten years, that's when they stop somewhere in there. Motorola's tend to go out a little bit further in lifespan. But they're three times the amount of money. And but what they do is it's just planned obsolescence, right? So they just stop making parts for them. They're good radios, but when you can't get parts for them anymore, then they get dropped, they wear out, they just.
Same problem with my thirty seven.
Yeah, can't get batteries for them, you know, that kind of thing, so. So we need, we need to do something and instead of doing nothing, and so my recommendations would purchase the three anyways.
I make the motion.
A motion on the table and support to move forward with the recommendation of the Alpena County fifty percent match. For communications.
There was a motion by trustee Reiner and.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. We have a motion and further discussion?
It's a fifty percent match, so the the memo that he has given us on October second is just flawed a little bit with the numbers, but it's.
Seeing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin. Supervisor Skibby.
Moving forward to amended item eleven, which is the Michigan Department of Transportation Road Right-of-Way Resolution. This is part of the permitting process to allow our DPW staff. To operate within principal M dot thoroughfares. Principally twenty three north and south. And M thirty two, we do the same permit annual with Alpena County for secondary roads. And it's my recommendation as pretty much mandatory that we move forward with the resolution as presented. I'll spare you the whereas's. We did not have the opportunity to format this and do any of our particular. Format or jargon. This is a state level. Permit and so it's my recommendation that we approve the performance resolution for municipalities. To allow F and V operations to work and conduct business within the M dot road right away. I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So me.
We have a motion on the table and support by trustee Polly. Motion was originally made by trustee Reiner. Further discussion? Once the state's website updates the internal application. Yes, this is actually needed because the bus garage on M thirty two has a water leak and we have to update the permit, so. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of, actually, it's a resolution.
Treasurer Ellery Summers. Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin. Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
This is now the second opportunity for public comment. If you have public comment, state your name clearly for the record. Stand at the podium and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Gary Goran. I'm at one oh nine Glen Ridge Street in Alpena. And I'm here to talk about the Third Avenue Extension. Which has been proposed by the Alpena County Road Commission. As many of you may know, many of in the room here are very much against it. And I really don't know where you're at personally on the subject. I assume you may have different opinions on it. I I think we really are. Where we're at right now is we're looking at two different options. One is to go with the Alpena County Road Commission and spend. Well, the engineer estimate was two point six million dollars on the project. Of course, it has to go out for bid, so it might end up. Being more and the township would pick up half of that or one point three million dollars. I think we have seen recently, especially in the headlines today. That this is not a project, the road. Would not be for school safety. Because the school has come right out and said it actually might create more problems. And they were not involved in in the planning at all on this. And it also seems that without a. Street light at Tamarack Road and M thirty two, the idea of taking. Traffic off of M thirty two doesn't seem very logical. I might add, there's been no study done on M thirty two for this project recently at all. So another option. Is something you consider if you're looking to spend a little bit of money, a little less. For ninety thousand dollars. If you were to pave the pathway which currently exists. Between the parking lot east of the tennis courts. That goes into the, across the bypass and into the. Into the parking lot at Meyer. A lot of parents are already dropping their kids off at the Meyer parking lot and they just walk into Thunder Bay. Because it's basically just down the path. It could be paved for ninety thousand dollars. And and snow plowing could be taking place. The people who are currently snow plowing in the Meyer parking lot and also in the Thunder Bay School. Have said they would do it for little or maybe even no extra funds to go that that pathway to keep it open for an emergency during that time period. So I would. If if you could consider that second.
Do you have any, I didn't wanna, if you have last.
I didn't, I didn't see your timer up there, that's pretty good.
But thank you very much.
Josh C. Press, one oh five Glen Ridge. I'm forth, I'm against the road extension. So. As this has all come out to my attention, I've tried tracking down information on it. I've contacted many people. I've kind of tracked it down on how did this all start? Where are we going from here? And I appreciate Mr. Lappin replying to my email. I appreciate that, thank you. My issue is that as I've tried to track this down, it's very hard to come up with, sorry. It's very hard to come up with a reason on why this is happening. We can talk to the road commission, they'll list a bunch of things. We can see stuff in the paper. They list different things. I have a very hard time finding a valid reason. We hear lots of stuff that it's for the safety of the kids. We clearly realize that that's not true. You know, we see that today with the letter Dr. Rabidow put out. We, as a community, have known that for a long time. We live on that road. I'm one of those cars that tries to leave the neighborhood when people are trying to turn left. I've tried to turn left and drop my kids off. It doesn't work. I just don't know where the plan is, right? Talking to the road commission, they say this project is only going forward because you guys say it should go forward. You guys put the money forth. We haven't heard from you. I don't know if that's true. I tried reaching out to some of you. I don't know where you stand. I'm a very thorough individual. I like to have reasons and I like to be able to make points and, you know, we can discuss things. But the problem we have right now is we've kind of got a shotgun argumentation where you're throwing a bunch of stuff out there. What is the reason? And let's hear it and let's talk about it. If it's safety, if it's bypass for thirty two, let's see the studies. Let's not just willy nilly do this. You know, we just talked to lawyers about liabilities and things of this nature. You know, and I talked to the road commission about this. They believe they're protected. They believe when people get hurt, they're safe. That doesn't mean it's morally right, right? To put this road through and not have a signal on Tamarack Road, that's absurd. But when you talk to M dot, they say it's never gonna happen until someone gets seriously injured multiple times or dots. This is what's being said. And it's hard for me talking with everybody because we don't know where you're coming from. I just want to hear. My son's been in an accident there. He's been at the accident of of Third and Hobbs. It's a sad thing. I saw a little girl get run over by an SUV. I witnessed it. This is not where we want more traffic. If we're really doing this for the community, let's hear it. I'd like to know. Thank you.
My name is Richard Magda. I live at one oh three Bristol Court. I am also opposed to the extension of Third Avenue. There, there's so many reasons that I'm opposed to it that it's hard to to start because first of all. There's no due diligence done on that. Now, my whole career was a project manager and it was my obligation to make sure if there was any project we were taking on. We had due diligence done and we had feasibility studies done to see if the project was worth it, even if it was recommended earlier. Do, does it still meet our parameters? Well, everyone's relying on on a. Well, everyone's relying on an, on a report that was done over twenty years ago. And I don't think that by making this a bypass for thirty-two, because it certainly isn't for for the safety of the kids, because the school had. Well, you've just read what Dr. Rabidow has done, has written about. It's going to put a lot of traffic on that road. M dot's uh traffic management program says that there is over seventeen thousand cars a day. Go in front of roughly where Culvers is. And the traffic that goes south on Bagley and onto Hobbs is over, is almost eight thousand cars a day. And I think conservatively, if only half of those vehicles, four thousand of them. Went, went down uh, went down uh Third Avenue, how is that making our kids safe? It is not. I mean, there's enough traffic going down there too, and what you're doing is you're creating an avoidance route. People who wanna go down to points south and points east, they're gonna avoid the traffic lights and traffic on thirty-two. And they're going to take Third Avenue, so I don't believe it makes it safe. I don't believe that it's responsible to spend a million dollars just to put more traffic on Third, on Third Avenue. And I think it's irresponsible to go forward without any kind of studies to give you. The data that you need to see if that is the right thing to do for the community and for the schools and more importantly. For the safety of the children. Thank you.
Sir?
Michelle Smith, I'm on ten ninety-nine Tammerack Road. I oppose the uh bypass road as well. Primary reason, the no consideration for no light on thirty-two and Tammerack. It is going to be a complete danger. Making the road fifty-five miles an hour and then also, nobody can seem to produce this design for the road. That's gonna cost over two million dollars. The county committing a million dollars or whatever, it's, it's been back and forth, how many, how many dollars you're putting forward? Is there gonna be a contingency fund? Because we all know UPS just did some construction, fly ash. They found fly ash, was that mentioned anywhere? I live right down the road, there's a, there's Stanson's uh floor covering, contamination, the bus garage. There was a contractor who did mainly that work and I know him personally and I know some of the stuff that was buried there. In that whole area of Third, are you sure there's going to be no contamination? When they get into the wetlands and put that culvert in, that there's gonna be no fly ash? Fly ash has to go to the landfill and that's very costly. I just wanna make sure there's good study done for my taxpayer dollars. Sure, I'll get a paved road through there, it'll be great, but it's gotta be safe, because I travel that road every day. Can you live with yourselves to know that somebody is going to be at that light on thirty-two or no light, excuse me? The intersection on thirty-two and Tammerack and they're not gonna get hit going slow. Fifty-five miles an hour, that middle turn lane is so dangerous as that road coming on thirty-two veers off into two lanes. I just drove behind somebody, or excuse me, I was in front of somebody this weekend. I started to turn right onto my road, what did the car do behind me? Went around me on a solid white. What's the person that's gonna be in that middle turn lane to go on to Tammerack gonna do? They're gonna get hit head-on, do you think it's gonna be a light accident? No, somebody's gonna die. And that's a shame that that is not considered, I cannot even believe this, this project would move forward without a light. And I personally called the M D O T and they said there is no light in the plan, they found out the same way. You and I did through the newspaper, so please consider that, thank you.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Seacrest, I live on one oh five Glen Ridge. And um I would just like to say I'm here against the road extension. Um, my mo- my concerns are with the safety issues with it. Um, I had kids in all three schools from junior high to high school all the way to LOY. For many years and that is such a very congested area already, I can't understand introducing more people to that area just as a bypass. I feel like the road on thirty-two and Bagley, it is made for that traffic, it is made for people to enter town and go there. And to create a bypass that will just add more to the congestion, I just feel like it's something that the safety needs to be considered a lot more before anything has gone through. A lot of my safety concerns also were, was addressed to the letter that was written to Mr. Skibby as well as the road commission. All the safety concerns in that letter were all what I had on my list I was gonna talk to you today, so. I would like to introduce that as part of what I'm saying, that please read through that and see, there's a lot more to be considered when it comes to that area. I, I travel it every day, right now, it's a one-lane road at the end of the day because people picking up at the junior high. Sometimes will be backed all the way from the junior high, all the way east to the light. So as I'm trying to come through to go get my son from the high school. People on incoming are in my lane coming at me, because there's nowhere for them to wait to go pick up their, their children. So there's another issue right there that we need to address. And if you want it, all you have to do is come to my house and drive out at two twenty every afternoon, it's already a dangerous situation. And I just feel like we haven't addressed a need yet, I feel like we jumped past. The need for the project, if it's the twenty-year-old study, that definitely should be looked at again. Because I feel like we need to understand why we're doing this, there's been a lot thrown at us, it's obviously not for the safety of the children. The superintendent came out with that letter to just prove that, so please consider. A lot more safety and a lot more due diligence and why we actually need to extend this road, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Smolinski, so I am a um township resident. As you know, and I'm also a public servant. And I came here this evening to listen to any comments um or any conversation about the Third Street Extension. Proposal, and I think you all know how I feel based upon that, um but tonight I wouldn't witness something different. You asked a room full of citizens to leave for an hour and wait to be heard. That is a huge barrier to public participation and I hope that you'll consider that in future agendas. Put your closed session at the end. Or have a special meeting or something if you need to talk with attorneys, it just, you've gotta do better than that, I'm. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Beverly Banks. I would like to thank Nathan Skibby and his work as the elected supervisor over the recent years. Some of his direct actions and decisions has awarded me opportunity to grow in many ways with knowledge. It's my understanding tonight is the last regular meeting that you will be presiding over. As the people have spoken and we will now have a new supervisor, I wish you all the best of luck in your future adventures.
There are many, any other public comment? Are there any, is there any public comment online as well? Seeing no further public comment. Uh, is there any discussion for the good of the order?
Yes. I would, I would like to address some of the comments that may appear. I'm Russ Reiner, been on this board for four years. The reason this came to light for us so that I can answer one of the questions is. The, uh, at a intergovernmental meeting, which means all the townships and city and the county. We meet at once every quarter, once every four months, something like that. Law enforcement came to the meeting, well, they were. Can't hear me?
People in the audience.
All right, can you hear me now? Not to quote any politicians, but I guess I'm my own one. Look, uh, law enforcement came to us with the concern about a second access to the school. And it's a legitimate concern, uh although the superintendent feels that they've done a lot of, summoned a lot of money and done a lot of work. Uh, with making the schools safer with cameras and so on. That's fine, but it doesn't help get law enforcement there. And uh. Uh, so. I felt. An urgent need, if you will, to find another access, what Mr. Goran proposed is actually not a bad idea. In fact, we've been talking about that, uh we've kind of formed a little uh. Informal committee, if you will, of Jerry and Connie, Tracy, uh, uh, Mr. Polley and myself, we've done some work on this. Uh, with no authority from anyone to do it, but uh. I, what was it, half hour, maybe a little longer, we walked that whole grade out there, looked at the various options for access. Through the grade from thirty-two to the school without involving a road. Uh, the. It's a cost somewhere, I guess the new numbers are somewhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars that are in, are shared at this point. So it came down a little bit from what was originally estimated, I think, if I understood the numbers we got, but. That doesn't really matter, I don't wanna spend a million dollars on an extension of a road that most of us don't want. And I also agree with the several points that were made about the light at Tammerack, if that can't be guaranteed. Immediately, as opposed to a two-year study from M D O T, I'm gonna vote against this extension. In fact, I don't see a need to vote for the extension if we can. Find this second access and I think with Jerry and Connie's help, we may have, Connie's done a lot of work, you should all. Congratulate her and I wish you to talk to her before we got here tonight, but um. She's, she's done a lot of work in getting that eight hundred thousand or eighty thousand dollar estimate, I think she was part of that, uh she's. Talked to the manager of the uh Meyer. She and I and and Norm talked to uh superintendent last and it took a little wind out of our sail, but uh I still think. From my point of view, I don't want a tragedy of any kind happening at that school where law enforcement can't get there. And you all know what will happen, if there's something going on at the school, kids are on their phones texting. Unless they eventually take phones away from them at school, and I don't know if that's ever gonna happen, now it's out of the bag, so. Uh, the parents get there before law enforcement and that whole intersection at Third and Bagley or Hobbs, whichever it is. Is gonna be clogged and law enforcement can't get there. So, what our hope is to get a private easement. Or only public safety, not for the public. With a gate at the grade to enter onto the school property where the law enforcement has access through that gate, no one else does. So. There's things being worked on, I would just want you to know. Um, because I'm not go- you assume that we've already approved this at our end, we haven't, it's never come before our board. As an action item, we've never allocated a million dollars or anything of that sort. So I'm just giving you my opinion as one board member. Um, but uh. You know. The uh, the traffic light is an absolute necessity, if they don't put that in for an extension, as far as I'm concerned. This township's not gonna give any money to an extension. Uh, I'm only one vote on seven, so. But that's where it started from law enforcement concerns about getting access to that school, if there's a school shooter, if there's anything like. And I don't like to talk about that too much publicly. The um. What else is there to address there? Uh, no, we haven't put forth any money, hasn't come to our board, uh watch our agendas, uh if you ever see it on our agenda, come back and make same comments. Thank you.
Any other discussion for the good of the order? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Support, motion and support. Support by trustee Lappin. Further discussion? Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, signified by saying aye. Getting adjourned eight seventeen.